It is now five thirty P M. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and worship of the leaders.
Just under your heads. Father, this council is blessed with such an amazing gift to be one link and a chain starting from the city's founding fathers to the leaders that we can only imagine in our future. Thank you, Father, for bringing together this council with our individual talents and imaginations. I pray that you will help each council member recognize what the person next to them brings to this table. I pray that jealousy and selfishness will never serve here and unity and fellowship for the betterment of our community. Father, as we ask about our vision, as we are asked about our vision for Orange, I pray that you give each of us the courage to talk about our talents, dreams for the future, not just our council's accomplishments. Orange has no limits except in our minds. Please open our hearts and our minds to your wishes. This said, that person grows most higher while standing still. I ask that you continue to guide us down the path you have placed upon us and never let us stop moving forward. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as all the lives of those we encounter afterwards. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Councilmember Childs. We will now move on to item three. Motion, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the code of ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs. Okay, motion passes. Item four, citizen comments. At this time, how much can be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda? All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. The first name that I have on my list is Mr. Todd Dunham. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Todd Dunham, owner of Dunham Construction in Orange and quite a bit of rental property in Orange. I'm having an issue with some water over at a barber shop in Orange, I own that Big Mike's out of eighty-seven, seventy, eighty-eight, out of eighty-seven. Back in October, we had an issue. The owner of the dance studio, Jason Knox, called me and he was having problems with his pool. Water was coming in his drains, and even if he turned the water meter off, he didn't drain his pool. So after checking, turning everything off, we realized that there had to be something under his slab leaking. And we found out that where the water meter is on this pitcher, plywood, there was a valve about, we got the city out there and they finally dug it up. And where his meter is, there's a valve about eight foot down that feeds my water meter. And it went right up underneath this building. So I've called people trying to get somebody concerned because it was washing his slab out. At that point, and to this day, I still think that's the city's water line because that's what feeds my water meter. Okay, we got Mr. Adam Jackson involved, and we've got, and I've got several other people. Meanwhile, this started back in October. City left in his parking lot, an eight-foot, an eight-foot, an eight-foot hole with just a couple little pieces of plywood and a little bit of Lindsay barricade over. We had three hundred kids walking by every week. So finally, we got him back out there and I got, had a meeting with Mr. Coons and Mr. Jackson. And I think they went, not long after that, built some of it in and made it look better. Little while, probably another month or two later, after having a meeting with them, and they're trying to tell me that it's not their problem. I need to try to find a way to get easement and get water to this building. Meanwhile, we had to take and run a piece of water. I had to purchase a water line and run it from right by his meter around the fence through the ditch to keep water to this business to keep it running. About a month ago, I got a call from them and they told me that this is not the city's water line no more. When it blessed it become my water line, and they can't have water line on private property, which they've been collecting water for thirty years. And there won't be to pay six or seven thousand dollars to pour under the highway or break a tap. And I know several businesses down the street, Judy's, they pay nothing for their tap. And best I can find out, Dollar General paid nothing to have a tap for them. Why do they want me? Whenever I've had a water meter and I still have a water meter paying a water bill, why should I pay that to? That's all I got, so.
Okay, next on our list, we have Dale Myers. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Dale Myers. I live at forty-four eleven Persimmon Circle in Cypresswood Edition on Highway eighty-seven and one oh five right there. And what I wanted to address today with the expansion project going across the street, we see a larger number of cars that are going through our neighborhood. And we have two traffic stops going through our neighborhood. Cars aren't stopping. There's only seventy homes in our neighborhood, so we pretty much know who's from our neighborhood and who the new cars are and stuff. And the large, the large number of cars, you see them mostly in the mornings and the evenings after work time and stuff. And I wanted to see what, if, if the city can do anything about addressing that and also the stop signs and stuff. We have a lot of kids out there and it seems like it's a speedway in the afternoons and stuff when the cars are passing through there. We just need some help to try to monitor that and see if there's anything we can do. Once the expansion gets started, we know the traffic's gonna be horrible. People cut through there now constantly, you know, and it's only gonna get worse. Just trying to get some help to see to mitigate some of that as we move further along with the project. That's all I have.
Okay, next we have Mr. Don Hensel.
My name is Don Hensel. My address is ninety-six West Cypress Avenue, Orange here. Um, my problem, I guess it must be a deal about water because my water smells. And I'm not sure, my family have been around at least seventy years or so. And I'm not sure if we feed off of the, the water tower on turret. But I, there's something wrong with the smell of the water. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be addressed, and I'd like to find out if this is part of the infrastructure. Uh, if the city is going to be doing something about the testing of the water from the, from the, the, from the water towers.
Thank you, Mr. Hensel. Now, when you say it isn't being addressed, this is your first time talking about a water smell. I know you normally have other tissues, but this is a smell, so now we'll check on this for you as well. To see what could be done about the water tower being checked. Okay, next we have D J Myers.
Thank you, guys. Uh, D J Myers, forty-four oh seven Sequoia Drive. It's pretty much the same thing as my father just passed on to you guys, but a little bit more than what we've got. Uh, I know that the city right now is helping out. We have some washout underneath those roads uh, that we have the traffic coming on, and I noticed that there's a lot of larger equipment that's coming through, some larger trucks uh, that's associated with the expansion project again over on C P T M. Uh, I know that there's mitigations that the city is doing, or I think today they put what we call glici, it's rock, it's a set that hardens to help support underneath the concrete. But you still see washout in some of those areas, and I have, I have photos and things like that, so if we can, if we can speak to the proper channels, at least have them come out there and come review it with us, we can show them where it's at. Uh, there are some things that we came here a couple of years ago that we addressed, I want to say probably either two thousand nineteen or late two thousand nineteen, early twenty twenty, uh, to address some of the other issues that were in there about unfinished sidewalks. Uh, there's some property that's still there with D S L D as well too that we, that there's not housing on it like it should have been. Uh, and so that's, that's mainly on the streets uh, that we've got going on in that area. Uh, besides that, again, I don't want to belabor this too much because it's pretty much the same thing about the traffic control in those areas. I did speak with Craig Balance, I believe. Do you guys have a monthly meeting with, with C P T M along with Tex Dodd? Uh, expressed my concern with him, and he said, you guys, as far as the city of Orange was concerned, it was actually gonna help out with that traffic control, so just want to make sure I get the, to talk into the right people. Alright, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? And also, please note before I do close this out that yes, Mr. Craig Lamont, the current manager for C P T M, has made several announcements where they are working on situations with the traffic and things like that. So they will be working with us here in the city to make sure we can get a better grip on that. They, I don't think they really anticipated it, we were gonna be trying to cut through that neighborhood to get to the plant pasture. But now that it's been brought to the city's attention and to Chevron Phillips, there are discussions that are taking place on that matter. With that being said, we'll move now to city announcements. Mr. Coons? Okay, move on to item A, A, number six A, consent agenda. March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. And April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion? Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Salter, a second from Ms. Henigan, Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, and Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Onto item seven A, a presentation briefing on a program to upgrade key facility generators across the city in partnership with Energy Texas Incorporated. Mr. Adam Jackson?
Good evening, council. Um, I'm here to bring you a presentation about our key facilities and our parts of generators. Mike, you got, pulling it up? Yes, just a second to get that pulled in for you. These generators that we operate throughout the city, I'm going to give you a little bit of background before we start it. But these generators sort of like our automobiles. Uh, they have large engines, they need upkeep, they need to be run regularly, uh, and they get aged. And just like our automobiles, as we drive them, the older they get, the more difficult it becomes to operate them, more difficult it gets to get parts and, and so. So please keep that in mind as we work through this. So, uh, if you'll note up on the screen, uh, right now, the city of Orange, we, we run about sixteen generators throughout the city. That has a total emergency power of somewhere around what we would say three megawatts, which is a pretty substantial amount of power for emergencies. These key generators run things like our lift stations, uh, the armory, and the police station, the fire station, and such. Uh, this chart gives you the amount of power each one uses. But take a note of the years in particular, there's quite a few that are older than ten years old. Like if you would. Take a look. No. You turn it up. Look, look, which one's on here? Uh, there's also a number of facilities that do not have emergency generators, six key ones in particular, including wastewater treatment plant. Right now, Entergy is kind enough to provide us three different power feeds to the wastewater treatment plant. So if power goes down on circuit, they can feed us to another. But if you'll note on the chart, the number of generators that we have that are beyond ten years old are fourteen out of the total sixteen that we have. So obviously, we've got some infrastructure need that we need to address, and as well, we've got some regular needs that still need to be addressed. Traditionally, we replace these generators with a number of different methods. City improvement programs, whether it's full budget or whether it's regular operating budget. But also, we use grants, the American Rescue Plan Act, the Community Well Development Block Grants, hazard mitigation grants we use. Right now, through those programs, we are, right now have five pending generator requests that we're waiting approval for, uh, as you can see listed here. There is also a non-traditional method by going through this called Power Through. It is a partnership with Entergy. Jim Lane is here with us, he is the regional coordinator for Entergy here in Orange. And this is a new program that's in its pilot program place where there's a sharing of costs between Entergy and, and their clients. Clients typically have their operating generators, some general issues. There, it costs a lot upfront to get these generators in. It costs a lot to maintain them, to operate them. Um, you need specialty services in order to get them in and maintain them. And through this program, Entergy shares with that. Entergy basically says, we will put it in and we will help operate it. And since we are a large conglomerate, we can get things at a cheaper price, and we can get those maintenance contracts at a more reasonable price than the cities can do. So it's a partnership in that, what do they, what do we get out of it? We get emergency power at a reduced price upfront. What do they get out of it? The ability to reinforce the grid during high peak load periods, such as in the summer when everybody's running their, their conditioning and they need that extra power. These generators will help support the grid. So we, it's a mutually beneficial program. Again, the benefits, more reliable power overall for customers in the region, but there's also some significant cost sharing. It bears the brunt of the initial costs, utilizes the corporate discounts in order to dip those things in, and allows us to cost share with them on a basis that we can amortize or defer the payments of our half. We don't have to pay our half upfront. We can spread those costs out over a period of time. Uh, we share the operational costs with them. All of these generators are natural gas driven, and it just shows up on our bill monthly for the city. And lastly, and I think most importantly, it helps us as a city leverage our dollars with Entergy to get twice as many generators as we would if we were just going to purchase that alone. So we wanted to bring this forward to you to understand where we are and where we're kind of heading, where we're looking at this with Entergy working forward from now. The next steps to identify some locations, replacing the wastewater treatment plant, replace the generator at the fire station, central fire station, and replace the generator at our emergency location at the armory. But perform some site evaluation and then look at some cost proposals and come back with those. That's the end of my presentation.
Oh, you said it's, um, their generators would help support the grid. Do they come online for it right now?
They can. They, they'll operate, they'll operate them remotely and as they see the grid, what's happening, whichever way it's going, they'll make a horrendous, bring those online as they see fit.
Are you looking at three?
Right now, we're looking at three possible locations. It's a pilot program, and it needs to benefit not only the city, but it also needs to benefit Entergy. Where's the best location to fit into their grid, uh, to provide services to the city as a whole?
What's, what's the usual lifespan of these types of generators?
Generally fifteen to twenty years for a generator. Uh, as I said, sort of like a car.
Yeah, so I'm curious, what happens fifteen, twenty years down the road when they start to fail? There's something gonna be in the agreement.
We will have to talk about what those replacements.
Maintenance type program?
Well, the maintenance is built into the program with the Power Through program where Entergy maintains, operates, and fixes those generators through that period of time. At some point in time, yes, the generator will have to be replaced, and we have to talk about how we do that. Because again, it's serving both of us, it's serving the city, emergency needs, it's serving Entergy for their power needs as the grid requires it.
Uh, I just want to say, great job. This is a wonderful way to be proactive. Um, I can't tell you how many times whenever we were going through Hurricane Lori, if we would have had those types of machine, we would have made it and get the lift stations and things back in operation quicker. So, uh, thank you so much for that and I look forward to seeing this come. And thank you, Mr. Jim, for helping us with this too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, there is no vote to be taken. This is a presentation. We'll move to item eight A. Considering ordinance, amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, in accordance with the charter of the City of Orange, Texas. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. So, uh, semi-nearly, we are presenting the budget amendments to y'all in the formal ordinance to approve. Um, just a reminder, line transfer is what we call when we move from one category, say, office supplies, to another category like tools maybe, within the same department. It's moving money, budget around a little bit. But a budget amendment is different. It means we needed additional funds, so it usually comes from reserves. Now, the majority of our budget amendments, especially, uh, in this first set this time of year, is because we budgeted for items and projects last year and we didn't finish them, or, uh, for some reason it wasn't available. And so we have to amend our budget for this year, roll those funds forward. So it's kind of a housekeeping kind of thing that we have to do to bring those funds forward to pay for the items that were budgeted from last year. So most of the budget amendments, which begins on page twenty-one, I'll list them out for you, are that case. Uh, however, I wanted to point out to you that are from the reserves. Uh, when we promoted Hillary to the E D C and we had, we hired the new, uh, where we call, communication coordinator. Well, that was in the city budget originally. Now it's in, we moved it to the city management budget, so I had to amend that budget to account for that. So that's a budget amendment, thirty-two thousand. Uh, and we added a deputy planning director, and that is coming out of reserves for forty-eight thousand roughly for the, to get us to the end of the year. So those types of things, uh, we had, when we repaving lines been apart, uh, it took us a while to get there and a price increase. So we have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget amendment because of the price increase. Those types of things are what usually the budget amendments are if it's not rolling a project forward. Uh, the last one I wanted to note was, uh, we have a budget amendment of two hundred twenty-five thousand that's coming from, not the general fund, the hotel occupancy fund, is reserves to pay for the Riverside Pavilion Ranch project. Any questions on our amendments?
Any questions for Ms. Zito? Uh, thank you for providing that information. To hear the budget amendments, um, for the citizens who are here, basically what she is covering is these budget amendments are gonna also help provide support. The new positions, which she, she stated, are because, because of all the permits we're receiving, because of all the issues that we're having, the people who were in those departments needed extra help in their rightful spots, and so we had to hire more people. And then in order to make lines being P P A accessible, and things of that nature for handicapped people and children, that is another thing that we're having to change. And so these budget amendments are not because it's a lack of not doing something properly, it's that it's actually people want to make sure we're doing it right. So thank you, Ms. Zito. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Bailey. Okay, thank you, Ms. Zito. Motion passes. Item nine A, considering resolution approving an E D C infrastructure grant agreement with S seventeen Investments, Studio Seventeen, at seventeen hundred West Valley Paint, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand. The first reading was April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Trainee?
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, this is the final public action step as we move forward and formally execute the assignment agreed. I'll have to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Trainee?
I know that, um, Mayor Spears mentioned something about an issue.
Drainage.
Yeah, drainage issue. So there's been an engineering design plan that's been submitted to the Orange County Drainage District for review, and it's currently under review right now.
We're still on topic.
Yeah, it has been taken in.
No other questions? Motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, and Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Onto item nine B, considering a resolution approving an E D C infrastructure grant agreement with Robinson Apartments, Mr. Dorsey Robinson at eight one one John Avenue, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero, in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand. The first reading was April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Trainee?
Similar action in terms of the final public action approval step moving forward with the application and the assignment agreed.
Definitely a uplift to that area of the community to have a local entrepreneur turning that into a duplex, uh, right next to the West Orange Administration Building. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, and Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trainee. Item nine C, considering a resolution electing to utilize the standard allowance to determine revenue loss as allowed by the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund or the American Rescue Plan Act. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so, uh, for this grant, originally the city elected to report the use of our funds, all the water sewer projects we had proposed, uh, based on project type. But, uh, the government has requested and recommended that we, us and other cities change. Instead of reporting these projects by project type, to do our reporting based on a, they call it a standard allowance mechanism. The, uh, total amount we received, it was eight plus, uh, well over eight million dollars. To instead of doing it project or project or project, they're saying, hey, you probably lost some revenue. Just use this to cover that. Well, the city really didn't have lost revenue, so we didn't think we could use that method. But now they're saying that it's available to everyone. So they opened it up, it makes the reporting easier, it makes the guidelines less stringent. So, uh, we recommend it, our grant administrators recommend it, so we have a resolution to do that.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Zito? And I mean, being in the conversation about, which apartment funds is currently being used to fix the infrastructure and the water lines and the drainage lines and all the things we are dealing with on a daily basis. I'll make a motion. I'll second it myself. Okay, Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Bailey. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item nine B, considering a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment One to the contract with Trailer and Associates Incorporated for services rendered relating to the city's Hurricane Harvey Communitet Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Contract twenty dash zero six five dash one four zero dash C five nine four, funded and administered through the Texas General Land Office, G L O. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor, so this resolution does not change the grant administrator's contract amount. The amount stays the same. It's just changing its categories to align with the G L O's projects. We entered it, we originally set up our contract one way per project, and some of those projects have changed since the application. And so the G L O entered it with the new projects, we had to align. This is just an alignment. It's a dollar amount, it's not.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Zito? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge, Ms. Henigan, McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Thank you again, Ms. Zito. Onto item nine E, considering resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for administration and environmental services for the city's two thousand and nineteen flood, Tropical Storm Emelda, D R four four six six, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Contract, funded and administered through the Texas General Land Office. Ms. Zito?
So, um, a while back, we prepared grant administrative services for the Emelda funding. But since then, we applied for a new project through that funding and we awarded that project. It's the Sunset Park, uh, neighborhood area of water sewer in the three. It's the Sunset Park uh neighborhood area of water sewer in the three. So we had to formally uh award the grant admin for that particular project to the grant administrator.
So the city took the action of seeking the grant to fix the water and sewer for that apartment, that area of town, and we've been successful in that. And now we're about to get it done.
It takes a while.
Takes a while before we get it done. I just can't believe they weren't working on that. That's awesome. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay? Thank you, Ms. Zito. Alright, onto item nine F, considering a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with five T utilities for the RFP two thousand twenty-three dash zero five gardenia pipe bursting and line repairs in connection with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Mr. Jack?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, a while back, we executed a contract to do pipe bursting sewer repairs in the neighborhood of Long Gardenia Avenue for around half a million dollars. We had the opportunity to expand that contract by additional one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to do an additional block of pipe bursting. We're going to go ahead and get that done uh for the neighborhood. Uh, the funding for this will come from the American Rescue Plan Act or park of funds, so there'll be no significant cost to the city in this change. I recommend approval.
Alright, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
And Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Jack. So more piping and water lines being fixed on another side of town. Thank you, sir. Item nine G, consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, conditionally approving a replant of drill site number one, block one, high twelve acres subdivision into track one A, track one B, track one C, and track one D, submitted by Nathan and Lisa Garrison and providing an effective date. Mr. Knoll?
This is a replant to take one large chapter of property and make it into four uh property for residential development. And the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this replant yesterday at their meeting. And the replant uh still gets not complied with the subdivision audits in several aspects. So the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend that the council conditionally approve new plant upon uh the plan coming into compliance with all the city's regulations.
So under the conditions, I think, make all the necessary adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments?
No, Brad and I were both at that meeting yesterday, so.
The comments were based on the conditional?
Yes.
Well, thank you for being there, both of you. Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion that we uh accepted under the conditions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second. Alright, a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
And Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Item nine H, consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, approving an agreement between the City of Orange and the Emelda Sea and HJ Lecter Stark Foundation for the installation and maintenance of wave finder signs on property owned by the foundation. Authorizing the city manager to sign the agreement and providing an effective date. Mr. Knoll?
This is a resolution that within the city and the Stark Foundation, whereby we would put wave finder signs on two Stark properties. One is uh the Stark property up at sixteen street and Park Avenue. And then the other one is here on Green Avenue near where the old First Baptist Church is. So these wave finder signs will help tourists as well as residents find local attractions. And we were very excited about this property, but then ventured between the city and the Stark Foundation.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Knoll?
Hi.
Is this, I have a question. Is this the project that Mr. Henigan were asking about when the funds were coming from?
Yes, sir. And the council at the last meeting, you approved using uh hotel occupancy gas plants to pay for these summers. This is a promising project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. You're going to be here for a while. Alright, item. So how do I get away with this? Is Ricky J address?
Just read the address.
Alright, here we go. Item ten A, y'all ready for this? Alright, here we go. Item ten A, consider a motion awarding the bids for demolition and removal of substandard structures as follows. Twelve oh seven First Street, fifteen twelve Fourth Street, eleven twelve Sixth Street, fourteen oh one Fourteenth Street, sixteen oh two Fourteenth Street, eight oh two Burton Avenue, eleven oh five Burton Avenue, thirteen ten Cherry Avenue, ten ten Plamont Drive, three ten Dakota Avenue, thirty-four twenty-one Kenwood Drive, nineteen hundred Link Avenue, five eleven North Street, eight two three Pope Avenue, ten forty-five Ruby Lane, and nine oh two Shoulders. Mr. Knoll?
These properties have all been in terms of standard in order to be demolished, and these are the low beaters when we open the bids on equal.
So what does this number put us over now?
On twenty-two hundred. It's seven years or so.
So the citizens who are new to this meeting, when people come and, you know, you see, you hear people say, we need to clean up the city. Well, this is what these things are for. So now we're at over two hundred homes that have been demolished. And on top of that, we are then responsible for keeping them cut and manicured. But here it is, another set of homes that are going to keep children out of it in any type of vagrant or illegal activity.
Right. And that number doesn't even include the ones that we've convinced the popular to demolish their own home at their own expense. So it's more than that, actually.
Good job.
Good job.
That's using city funds.
Good job. Alright, so do I have a motion or question?
No question.
Lady, lady, that is great.
Alright, so a motion from Ms. Salter or a second from Ms. Henigan, because she said that's great as well. So Burge?
Hi.
Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
And Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Alright, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Item ten B, consider a motion approving an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred in adopt a spot funds to the Orange, Texas Rotary Club to replace the landscaping at the Welcome to Orange sign located at seventeen oh five at Parker Drive. Mr. Knoll?
Uh, I'm very excited to present this application for adopt a spot funds to actually improve the uh the sign uh on the corner of Drive there. And what we plan is for, is to take out all the existing landscaping and, and put a new landscaping and clean up the sign and put in new moats on the back of the sign and use a local landscaper. And this is their community project that they were doing in cooperation with the city and with the adopt a spot program.
That's nice. That's very good.
It's a, so and there's, and this meets all the requirements and regulations of the adopt a spot regulations.
So for those who also don't know, this is where the old fire station was next to Lionsden, right before we get to the new, the Ford dealership. So uh, you probably don't notice it, but hopefully soon you'll notice it. Alright, do I have a question? Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion from Mr. Childs or a second from Mr. Burge? Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Item ten C, consider a motion appointing to the Orange Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors for a specified period of April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Trainee?
Yes, sir. So just a few comments, if you don't mind, before we take action. Okay, so first and foremost, I'm really excited uh in the respect that we have eight applications that are part of your packet. And as a professional courtesy, if you will allow me to read those names on consideration, I'll read the names. But then immediately following that, you as a count, mayor and council, have the opportunity to have open discussion before the vote, first motion is actually placed on the floor. Okay? So let me read the names. Mr. Dwayne Bullard, Mr. Matthew Frederick, Mr. James Orville, Mr. George Mortimer, Mr. John Jefferson Junior, Mr. Joseph Molina, Mr. Joseph Angel, and Jerry Vandergrift. So you have the opportunity before the mo, the first motion to have the internal discussion among yourselves as a council before you move into the motion. Now, please note, once the motion is placed on the floor, then it either requires a second of vote or if there's a lack of a second, then the motion dies and then you move forward with the second motion until we get there. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay.
Do you have a recommendation?
I do.
Are y'all want to discuss it? So if you want to discuss it.
I know. Yeah, I'll make a motion. You can make a motion. Nominate Mr. Mortimer, Mr. George Mortimer.
A second.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second and a third for Mr. Mortimer. Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
And I will say hi as well. Congratulations, Mr. Mortimer. We're delighted to have you. You've done a great job working with us on planning and zoning for many years. And definitely look forward to seeing what you can help us get on the EDC. Now I'd love to car wash though. He's still toward behind now. Okay, here we go. Next, item ten D, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the city's quarterly investment report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. So this is the city's investment report for the quarter ending March thirty-first. On page one, you'll see, it begins and it will list all our cash investments. Total cash investments for the city is forty-two million nine hundred twenty-five one thirty-eight. We're averaging about three point oh seven rate return, which is great because we're doing a finished chart. You went all the way to the right. Just a year ago, we were earning point two one.
Mm-hmm. I remember that.
We're glad the rates are going up.
Yes.
We utilized our sweep account. Uh, we've done a lot of things to try to increase our returns. Um, we still highlight, we got first financial bank, uh, two hundred forty-eight thousand. And in our money markets sweep right now, we have thirty-three million nine fifty-three. Uh, and our checking account, we have about eight point seven million. Uh, and I've told you, we earn them out at a little over three percent. The six-month rate we build average right now are at March thirty-first was four point seven five. So we're not doing too bad. Usually we have a bigger gap here, so we're doing pretty good. And so far this year, the city's earned three hundred twenty-eight million in interest compared to last year. Remember, we were in a zero.
Mm-hmm.
So it's uh, we're do, we're doing much better. The city's doing better. We're taking advantage of everything that we possibly can.
All while still lowering the actual city tax rate last year.
Yes.
And we're still making improvement. For those who don't know, the city did lower the city tax rate. So to hear these numbers, uh, that just know we're doing the right thing. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
There's a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item ten E, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation Financial Report for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Zito?
So this is the EDC's financial report for the quarter ending March thirty-first that I presented in the EDC meeting earlier. Y'all, should we crack it or ask any questions or?
I do. Everybody okay? Alright, do I have a motion?
Motion. Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item ten F, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation Investment Report for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Zito?
So this is the EDC's investment report that just shows it lists its uh cash investments that I presented at the EDC meeting earlier.
Any questions from Ms. Zito? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. uh, Zito, motion passes. Item ten G, consider a motion adopting the City of Orange Recreation Center Sports Camp fees. Mr. Jack?
Yes, Mayor. Um, in June, we will be hosting at the Recreation Center Sports Camp for the entire month. Uh, our Recreation Center Director, Mr. Danger, is just going to give you a briefing on our suggested fees.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So like you just said, we're hosting a sports camp for ages seven to twelve years old for the month of June. What we're in process of doing is uh partnering with Texas Workforce Commission to add extra staff to host this particular camp. With this camp, the goal is to to get the kids somewhere to go outside of school because it's that weird time. It's like immediately after school and the, the parents won't have many places for them to go because vacations aren't planned yet. So the fees that we're recommending is a hundred and eighty dollars for all five weeks for one child. We have a discount up to four children. Um, the first child will come in at a hundred and eighty dollars. The second child will pay a hundred and twenty-six. The third child is a hundred and eight dollars, and the fourth child will be ninety dollars. And if you have more children after that, each child will be ninety dollars therefore thereafter. Um, these fees all total up to at least five, five hundred and four dollars, I believe. And we, they will be paid in plans. If they don't want to pay for the entire five weeks, they can pay forty dollars per week. I've done research with my counterparts, the Lime CA, the Needle and Rag, uh, Boys and Girls Club, they're charging a hundred and ten dollars per week. So with this hundred and eighty dollars, this is also going to include breakfast and lunch, which will be provided through the Triangle Community Outreach. They're going to provide breakfast and lunch, and it will be from nine oh one to two P M, Tuesday to Friday. And so with creating this program, we're also creating jobs. So uh, staff, recommend approval.
I, I'm glad for you because that's exactly what we built this for. And if this keeps a kid off the street or gives somebody a break at home, especially if they got four or five kids, they definitely need a break. So not only are y'all giving them a chance, thank you. I, man, that's thank you. I love that.
I'm a stack about the price.
Mm-hmm.
It is beautiful.
That's a third of the cost for the other people.
Yes.
Um, I also want to mention, there is a late pickup fee. There is a late pickup fee. I know it seems like mommy's day out, but mommy, you gotta come back.
Yeah.
So from, there will be a grace period of fifteen minutes because I know uh some people get stuck in traffic and so on and so forth. But after that fifteen minutes of trap, of grace, even though you're in communication, there's still will be a late, a late fif, a late fee of fifty dollars.
Okay, they gonna come get the kids.
Yeah. Because sometimes what we deal with at the rig now is, oh, I'm in Boeheim, oh, I'm in Lake Charles, and and we're waiting past the time we are actually closing. We don't want to leave the, the students sitting on the front porch. So this will make sure parents are as honest and honest as they can with their kids.
That's a great job, man. Not only are we giving them a chance to learn, we're going to give the parents a chance to learn. Hopefully not in a horrible way, though. Do we have any comments or questions?
Great job. Really, really great.
Alright, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Hi.
Ms. Henigan?
Hi.
Ms. McKenna?
Hi.
Ms. Salter?
Hi.
Mr. Childs?
Uh.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you so much, Mr. Danger and Mr. Jack. Item ten H, discussion regarding House Bill twelve seventy-nine of the Texas House of Representatives, eighty-eighth legislative session, as it relates to the extent of the municipality's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Kuntz?
Mayor, council, you know, every, every two years when the state legislature meets, there are literally thousands of billers opposed whether it's a house or a senate. So it is uh, you never know which ones are picking up steam and making actions, but which one will ultimately get passed. Uh, but about a week or so ago, uh, you know, we did have heard about this. Actives have mentioned to us to start taking a look at House Bill twelve seventy-nine. Currently, uh, House, House Bill twelve seventy-nine, first of all, I'll tell you, it, what it would do is a city our size that would do, sorry, ETJ, or extraterritorial jurisdiction, for two miles out from our city, those would be five hundred feet. Uh, different cities, a different size, that different reductions that this would pass. Uh, currently, uh, about three weeks ago, April fourth or fifth, uh, the committee heard testimony. Didn't know about that, but they heard testimony. Uh, currently, it is pending in the committee. Uh, basically that means the committee has not voted on it one way or the other. And if it does get out of committee, it is still has to continue to get out of the process. So we're, we're not there yet. we're we're not there yet. Uh and apparently the end date, there's a longer term for the last day of the legislative session. Today's about Memorial Day, so we have a month or so to to con- continue to track this. But uh if it does pass, if it passes that legislation, the the committee, it goes to the House and uh similar Senate bill is signed by the governor. Uh this would reduce the, you know, E T J from two miles down to five hundred feet. Um I did speak to the uh staff member of the committee chairman, uh his last name, the committee chairman, the state representative for that committee is Burns, spoke to one of his staff members. He said that they would uh he was very emphatic that uh E T Js, um you know, they support this and uh that E T J, their their time is coming to dawn. Uh they're gonna sit there and argue with the with the gentleman, uh Cole Mychalk, who uh works for Speaker Beal, and he has an office. Cole has an office here at City Hall. Uh he uh the day after Vincent mentioned this to me, I mentioned to him that he could talk to him about it. He said this thing has support. Again, has support. It also only gets passed two different things. But but again, it seems like this thing uh has abstained, needs to be on the radar. You know, we will soon be talking about uh budget, not only for twenty-four, but you know, every year when we talk about budget, even though the citizens and maybe the council sees just the immediate council year, we're also talking about years in advance and what are we doing for the future. So we've got to take a a big uh view of this thing. So again, also, um if it doesn't pass this time, there's uh you know, two more years to get another crack at it. That's what they decide to do. And I said they're sounding the alarm bell, rather say this is this could be serious consequences to the city and and cities that also have uh issues. Uh and I say issues, but you know, affecting their E T J. So again, that's not pretty breaking out.
Sure. Uh do you mind sharing what the final impact would be to our budget in the future if this does pass?
Well, uh currently, uh many of our industrial district agreement partners are outside in in the E T J, not all of them, but many of them are. Uh most, just cut to the chase, most of chemical roads outside of E T J. Uh in the IDA, the yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, in the E T J, if this would pass, it may be outside of the E T J. Uh again, I think where I was going back when I talked to that uh committee chairman, uh staff member, he said they want to do, put something some language in there, um that any IDAs, industrial district agreements would remain in effect until those already agreed upon exploration needs. Uh anyway, the the question you asked was how much do we currently get from our IDAs? Uh and we have we have a few that are not in on chemical road. So there'd be a few, but the the heavy areas are on chemical road. We get about ten and a half billion dollars of revenue, operating revenue for our IDAs. So we'd be possible we lose ten million dollars on a twenty-eight million dollar operating revenue. We're not there yet. We're not there.
But just like but but just like COVID, just like Hurricane Laura, just like Harvey, we're gonna get through it.
Absolutely.
So don't get sad. We're gonna be all right. We gotta let you know what's going on.
But one of the reasons, again, when we when we start talking about budget.
Representatives to not go that way.
But again, so next month, because we're gonna start, we're already talking about budget. And you know, we've kind of enjoyed the last few years where like we're doing more stuff, more stuff, more. Uh I'll just be honest, I'm gonna be conservative to say let's let's not, let's do what we're supposed to do, but let's not get out there and try to do things that we can't unwind. Or maybe things like, you know what, maybe we can wait and see how this is going.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Coons? Well, we did leave two items on the agenda after this, so we didn't end on that point. So but uh just to bring it up, thank you, Mr. Charles, for asking that question. So yes, this is one of those situations where uh we want to be upfront, open and honest. Talking with Mike, if this does happen, which we hope and pray that it doesn't, when if we address it, we will address it publicly. We will work with the community. We will have open discussions and bring people to the library where we can all sit together and see um what has to be done. But but I want to assure you that um no matter what, we're gonna get through it, you know? So we're gonna be positive. And uh like Brad said, hopefully it doesn't happen. But if you have, if you have, if you know somebody that's in the Congress or in the Senate and or the House of Representatives, whatever, that can help us, this is the time to make those calls. Because they they work for for us. And I mean, I love them. I'm not dogging anybody. But if you if you know somebody you can call, pull that cell phone down.
Yeah, get us a state.
Right, state level. That's why I said, House Representative, Senate, whatever it takes. You and your cousin, you don't like them anymore. Call them. All right. So um that's just this discussion. No voting. Onto item ten I. Discussion on refunding property tax paid on land tracks deannexed across from the Orange County Airport. Mr. Coons?
So I think next agenda, I will put some happy agenda on it. For me, I would of course like a summer camp or something. So anyway, y'all will recall, um you know, as an incentive for the uh Gold Trig Palmer's plant, CP Kim coming to us, we deannexed some parcels of property across from the Orange County Airport, you know, again, because that was uh one of the things we were asked to do by CP Kim, those hopes. We deannexed some of those tracks. Well, for whatever reason, not us, um those parcels remained. They were reflecting that they were still in the city. CP Kim paid property tax on them. And also they woke up and said, oops, we shouldn't have paid. We want our money back. So we're not physically going to have to write a check, but what the uh what the folks are gonna do, uh so again, the taxes are collected instead of just paying us what we're supposed to get in the next few months until we make up this deficit, uh somewhere in the eighty-three, eighty-seven thousand dollars over the next last three years. So we have to pay that back.
Good. Things happened, but it wasn't our fault. Wasn't our fault. All right. So that's just a discussion on that. No vote to be taken. And um last, we have item ten J. Discussion regarding the requested drainage maintenance agreement for Eagle Point Parkway and Medical Center Drive, project base two, to be located at Medical Center Drive in Highway sixty-two here in Orange, Texas. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, again, if you look on page two oh eight, you'll see the the uh having an overview, if you will, about there the Eagle Point Parkway. Well, we are contacted by the Drainage District, apparently. Some folks are working on that second phase of Eagle Point Drive. Well, with that, they're going to have to develop some retention detention ponds, both for the roadway. Well, as designed, those detention ponds out there are also going to support some of the some of the additional development. Um again, the the they're looking at us to sign an agreement that we will either maintain or cause to be maintained. Those two ponds are out there, you know, that will support that phase two. We're not there yet. We still have some more discussion and work out some things. You know, is that our responsibility to maintain those detention ponds for that roadway and the future development? You know, that might be open to discussion.
Okay, so there's no mention uh of a motion or voting to be made. It's a discussion? We need to talk about it or is it? Do we need to wait till another time?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just kind of mention what we did on the first phase. Uh uh when we were uh working on the first part of the Medical Center Drive and Eagle Point Parkway, uh we entered into what is referred to as a detention capacity easement agreement, which is a mention, which effectively said, we participated in some of the funding, as you are aware, in uh digging the ponds, preparing the ponds to accept uh uh stormwater. And um the land was donated, we dug the ponds. We then got a capacity guarantee. All we really want is the ability to fill a pond up with the amount of water that it takes to offset, under the Orange County Drainage District standards, the amount of stormwater flow. And so uh in that agreement, uh the owner of the property agreed to the long-term maintenance as the county's operating number. What our hope would be is that on phase two, we would look towards some similar discussion, uh and outcome, and basically just to have a second detention capacity easement agreement. As we also know, at this point, there's no city has not the capital fund for the phase two roadway. We have been granted, as the council knows, the easement corridor all the way to sixty-two, but there is not on your capital budget program the construction of that roadway at this time. So this is looking in advance what the Drainage District would require. But at this point, uh I'm not where there's any funding to complete that roadway. So it is appropriate, the Land District Council, to tell you what our goal would be, to try to collaborate again with the landowner, give the detention pond area, do what funding, if the road is constructed by someone, uh to uh make sure that we do get that same level of detention capacity and allow someone else who also benefits from that to maintain there.
Again, that that agreement would come to y'all for approval.
So any other comments or questions from the council? If not, then we will move on. Onto the city manager report. Mr. Coons?
No report.
Okay, city council report, starting at my left.
Um early voting this week, April five. Early voting Monday and Tuesday, seven to seven. And then May sixth, a follow-up Saturday. Oh, so let's do it.
Ms. Innigan?
Thank you all for coming tonight. It's really nice to see an audience here.
Yes.
Ms. McKenna?
Um yes, let's all vote. Um as as you all hear me say, every time that voting comes around, people die to give us that right. So let's get out there and make sure that we do our part and we vote. Um that's the American way. We vote the way our hearts tell us to vote and uh it's our privilege and our right to vote. So let's go do it. Um a couple of things. Um I'm just, once again, so proud of our city staff. Um the the drainage issues we have been facing for years with all the storms, with all the floods, with all the tornadoes, you guys are just banging away at it and millions of dollars are being spent. You're finding the money. You're doing the job. Thank you ever so much. With the new Recreation Center, our children are becoming number one like they should be. Um with the Way There signs and the Rotary getting on board with that sign, um our community is just really coming together. I just can't wait to see what God has in store for us.
Ms. Salter?
Uh yes, uh thank you everybody for uh coming. I did have uh three people that reached out to me and I will be sending an email. Uh Mrs. Ernestine Scott, um one of her properties in uh Claremont, um uh by the um a tree trunk. It was it was cut and she wanted to know if the city would kind of take care of of some of that. She thinks it's on the city side, so she wanted to um speak to someone about that. So I'll be sending an email. Uh Mr. Revo, uh had a complaint of a property located on Ryan Street, uh overgrown property next to her property, uh complaining that um this caused embolism and things that they took to uh coming to her property. Uh and uh Mr. O'Neil, uh in the mega edition, um he said on Decatur Street, uh that the road needed to be looked at, that the asphalt is is loose and coming out uh just along the whole entire street. And I think that's it.
Mr. Charles?
Got a couple of things. Sixteenth Street is open for business.
Yeah.
Uh the second item for the citizens in Hi Ho, uh Mayor Spears and I got clarification on the retention pond on the new development. A detention pond is a dry pond for flood control. A retention pond holds water and for flood flood control for beautification of the neighborhood. So for all the residents, they're concerned that this pond is not draining. It's not supposed to drain completely. So it was nice that the developer discussed this with me and Mayor Spears last night.
Really nice.
I thought of that.
Vote. He's a man of many words. Um no, once again, thank you all. Uh before we go into executive session, I do want to thank everyone for being here. Um it there's there's a lot going on in our city right now and we talk about these things all the time. Um it it's it's one of those things to where I want people to understand that there's seven of us up here, there's two hundred city employees, and of the nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-four citizens in this city, everyone has an issue that is of most importance to them. So as we knock one out over here and fix stuff over here, then this street has a problem. And then when that street gets fixed, then this street. And so I'm thankful to staff for giving us the updates. And I want people to understand, you gotta realize, we're out here trying our best to make it happen. I'm not gonna say we were eighty years behind. We probably were seventy-nine years behind. And so we're trying to play catch up. So some things are quicker. Redoing Lions Den Park doesn't take as long, but having to re-dig and re-horn water lines under neighborhoods takes a lot more money and a lot more time. But we're gonna get there. And so um I'm I'm happy to highlight the the victories. I'm happy to work with these people who are up here. And I ask that you uh continue to support and go out there and vote. So the meeting you missed before this was EDC. A lot of people ask us all the time, how do we get these businesses? A lot of times, those of us sitting up here and the EDC people, we go and knock on doors. I went to Daddy O's Burger the other day and after I got me a triple cheeseburger, I asked them if they'd come to Orange. Now they're looking at a business, an empty business here in Orange. So we're asking those people. We're trying to get those people. But one update I wanted to give you before we close out. So one point seven million dollars has been pushed out from the EDC in incentives and has brought us a return of eighteen point nine million in business. That is a that is monumental. So things are changing, but you just gotta give us a little bit more time. Okay? So with that being said, that's adjourned to close executive session. Deliberation with city attorney pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one. Consultation with attorney regarding matters associated with Sabine Parker Partners. So at this time, you are welcome to go vote or hang out outside. It's not so hot right now. And we'll let you know when you're reconvened.